Which one?
Do you know the subject first?
Um, no.
What service?
I mean, everybody goes by my house. I can tell you, no.
So exactly.
Really?
She kept it at the door and I'd be like, is he coming? Sure. It's amazing. Reading a book now on the senses that animals use that are, you know, they perceive the world very differently from us, whether it's hearing, smell, different receptors that they have. This was spoken in the best nonfiction books of the year. Yeah, quite, quite something.
What's the title? I do audio books.
Yeah. And he will eventually come up with it. Or you don't want to read it.
Midnight tonight when he's trying to sleep, he's gonna pop to his brain.
Oh, see, you know, you know, that asleep may be long enough to wake up and read like he does for two hours.
Really?
He reads so much more than I do. I just get the reports like this. I just sleep. An immense, an immense work by Ed Yang Yeh.
I'm down.
I did.
Oh, okay. The state, you know? Draw it out.
So where's my story?
Well, back in the summer, just they had, I think it was a $15 million attempt that they were going to loan to one of them. So different vendors had to, and you got points for different things, applications. One of them, you got 15 points.
Okay, it is seven o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. First item on agenda is I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Excuse me. These are one of the problems I've had. Okay, we have Amy Free, myself, Russ Edwards, and Melissa Purney in attendance. Joe, I know this is doubting if he could make it because he was down in Concord at some appointments. Tonight's meeting is just to work on the budget, so it's just a budget meeting. So it's, you know, not doing the normal and everything. So we're not taking comments from the audience tonight. Charlene and I and Melissa worked through the budget material on Saturday. And it was my, this was the opportunity to get Joe and Amy brought up to speed because I can't keep to them without a public meeting. So wanted to run through this stuff to start. And the budget here is scheduled for the 24th. Where we'll go through the entire budget and all, anybody that wants it, welcome to attend and encouraged to ask. From our town report, we went right through this. And the debt service is the first thing, which is for the Moore's House and the Love Hill loan payment. That was reduced to about roughly $60,000 right now. Because the truck payment, truck was finally paid off. So what we think we'll do is for the paving job of Cash Street, bring that up so it's setting right about $100,000 mark. Again, keeps the budget fairly level. The next item is the executive, which pays different salaries and stuff with different operation of the town. We think, we've kept this at $38,000 for three or four years. So I think increasing it by a couple thousand to have a little bit of a cushion is, we figured was a smart step. The election was the next thing. Last year it was $3,000. There was three elections. Costs approximately $1,000 per election. So this year there's only one, so drop it to $1,000. Financial administration staying at 36. Reval, $8,000. That stays the same because we're under a contract. Legal expense, we've still got something out of the budget. I don't know if you think we need to add any more.
I don't think so. We didn't, we didn't use, yeah, would you, how much do we have left?
Well, no, this just is showing what we've got budgeted for next year. Okay. Personal administration, which is again, some salaries and the running of the building. Planning and zoning, landed $4500 because they're going to revamp. And it looks like with the turnover personnel, they're going to have to redo some of the heaters and everything again. So they're going to need that money. General government buildings, which is the upkeep, the light, heat, power, and the different projects that we have in mind. We've kept it at $28,000 for about three or four years. So we've added a couple thousand to it so that we stay within that window. We do have a project on there for replacing the front steps. That's about, at this point, the estimate is about $8500, $8600. But that may change due to cost and materials. Cemetery passage is the same, I just have a placeholder.
Russ, one thing I just wanted to add under general government buildings is we talked about moving the electric utilities phone from
Highway Department, putting it all under one, yes. Right now, the different bills are spread out to the different accounts. So having all the power bills, all the telephone bills, all the heating bills combined under one amount, then you can look at our listing and realize exactly what we've got. Dispatch service, we've got budget at 14 and we're waiting for the quote back here where it is. We're anticipating a 5% increase, but don't know for sure. So that's the one.
I have a feeling he's gonna, he's gonna give you the same answer as they do their, our just stuff in July.
Oh, okay, so, so if we increase this by 5%, we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'll let you do it.
Yep. Ambulance service, which is provided by New London. I got the quote from them and the new rate would be $35,136, which is just a couple thousand increase from last year. So that's pretty good. Highway department, we're keeping that same with the taking of the cost of fuel, of heat, light, phone, stuff off of there. That gives us a little cushion to deal with whatever increases we're running to as far as the highway department. The street lighting, pretty much the same. Sanitation, we've looked at stuff and thinking that we can keep that still at the 67.5. And we've only been increasing it a little bit over the past few years as some of the costs for water testing gone up. I have not seen anything that's going to be an increase for this year. Looks like it's just the same number as last year. Direct assistance, we're still pulling that away. The vendor payments of the different health agencies gone up a little bit. So we're looking for another $200 increase up to $4500 there. Some of the things we wanted to do that are going to impact some of the warrants are light road grid. Joe was able to find a culpant pair instead of replacement. And I was talking with Mike Hansen this morning. We've got a quote for doing it for $89,600. And the bridge capital reserve fund has about roughly $144,000 in it. So we've got enough in it to get that done. So it should be an easy thing to pass as far as warrant because there won't be any increase in taxes. There is a $12,300 fee they need, first of all, to take care of wetlands permitting, survey, delineation. When I talked to Mike, he was saying this is a two or three month process to get done. So I suggested that perhaps we should give that payment to them early and get the process started so that when the warrant is actually approved in town meeting, they'll be, you know, it'll be all set to go anytime he has the paperwork and everything set.
And Russ, can I just say, is, is, does the $89,000 number include that 12?
Pardon me?
Does the $89,000 number, the total, does that include the permanent fee?
No, the 12.3 is in addition.
In addition.
Yep. So, so between the two, you're tucking it 90, just a little over $100,000. So we still have enough in the capital reserve fund to do it. So what I was thinking tonight, entertain a motion that we pay the permitting, survey, and fee so that we can get the process started. So.
Can I ask a question?
Ask all the questions.
We don't have to ask permission to use, to do this early? It doesn't have to be part of the warrant during the meeting?
Because the capital reserve fund for the bridges, the select board is actually an authorized agency to spend. We can take money from that to pay for the permitting process. And that speeds things up. I really don't see anybody voting down the warrant because number one, to bridge the state is identified that we have to fix. They haven't got to the point of saying, you gotta shut the road down. That could happen. So we've been building the reserve fund up for it. We have the funds for it. The warrant, the, you know, the, the legal steps. Talking to DRA, talking to Charlene. Because of the way this stuff's set up, we could actually just have a couple of meetings where we discussed it. Then we could have it done. I'd rather have a board in the town and get that covered that way. So if there's any questions, such as yours, it would be brought up in the public meeting.
The other question is, we were going to use almost all of that reserve fund. How do we approve that almost?
We're gonna have to start putting it back in each year. Some of the money that's going into the bridges capital reserve fund is from the sale of the Cash Street property. That's just a little drift, $0.5000. But when the Loon Lake property sells, that money will be going in because that's the way the warrant was written. However, we have to write a separate warrant to put the money in because the warrant has to identify exact dollar amount. And that's some of the warrants that we're gonna have to write for this year. We've got the bridge on Brighton. We'll do a warrant to write up how to pay for Cash Street paving. The greater funds, we sold the old greater for $12.5. That's going to go back into the capital reserve fund for equipment. And then for the Cash Street property, capital reserve fund, putting that money back in.
Is there any federal money? I mean, Biden, Biden money was supposed to pay for a lot of roads and infrastructure and is there?
We haven't done anything with dealing with go for money because we just don't understand what we can actually spend it on and everything.
No, not that money, the whole new money that Biden passed.
Oh, don't even know what that's.
I mean, that is supposed to have billions of dollars.
We'll have to wait to see what it comes, I don't know. We do have a couple different funds that else coming in from Highway Block Grant. What was the other one that we talked about Saturday?
This one here. Oh, the meals and
Oh, the meals and then the chunk of cash that came in from the state.
This one.
Between Highway Block Grant, bridge payment, and so forth. This bridge payment looks like it's, it's $34,000 and we can apply to this. So that'll reduce the amount that we actually have to take out the capital reserve fund. But we have to write up the warrant and thing to identify this. What we want to do is just get that 12.3 started.
Oh, yeah. So, so you entertain the motion and then I make the motion, right?
That's
I make the motion that we approve the 12,000.
Withdraw the 12.3 from the trust fund. And I think it makes the most sense is that we're cutting down time. Otherwise, we've got people to march, you can get them started. Any other questions, answers? Did Charlene say anything else when we were talking about doing the bridge? Okay. I guess I take a vote then, all in favor? All right? So then that means we need an application. I'm, I'm not taking too many questions from the town tonight.
Just clarification, was that something that was sent out yet? How was that arrived?
Joe had been looking at getting bids for the bridge. He got this, however, I don't know why it was sent in, but they did, instead of a bridge reconstruction, they simply redo the bottom at much less cost.
Right, because they're originally a bid. Bids came out or?
No, Joe was just getting quotes to find out because we hadn't decided when to do it. But the quotes to do a whole bridge is significantly more than we'll even have.
I get that, but is, is it now we offer bids to see if this other players?
No, we're not going to send them out for bids because we know the cost estimates at this point for replacing the bridge were excessive $200,000. And this is roughly half that.
But were you asking for more companies that do this type of thing here?
Yes.
Is there more companies that do this?
I don't know.
If I can put in two steps. There aren't a lot of places that do these small bridges. It's right in the center and one of those company. Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, you know, some of these companies.
That's a, the side of trustees.
She looks fast. Really, you know, good friend here. Does it work right? Fair?
I'll just do all the rest of that.
It sounds like he came up with Yeah, that wasn't bad. Totally.
If you save your questions for the budget hearing, I'm not sure Joe is here to answer the highway department questions. So we'll get that too. Pretty much, we get rid of Article 3, the money voted for the tower building. Article 4 is the monies that are requested from cemetery maintenance from the Sawyer Fund. We've got another regular article for $25,000 to be put in the bridges capital reserve fund. Because even though we're taking money out of it, paying for a bridge, there's still other ones that need work too. Boulder, as well. Add money to the capital reserve fund for revaluation, which happens every five years. So instead of having a $25,000 hip, we'll have a saved up as $5,000 each year. We'll have to figure out how much we want to put in the capital reserve fund for the town vehicles and equipment. Right now, we're down to about $20,000. We'll put $12.5 in for the, from the greater and maybe just a little bit more towards the next vehicle purchase. Because each vehicle is, you know, like a dump truck, a couple, a couple hundred thousand or so.
If you ask. Article. Have you looked at, have you looked at municipal leasing options? So we, we transferred the entire buy process to lease process and we were getting 1.75% interest. And then you could turn the cars in for seven years and lease a new one. Because the value that you obtain with the retention isn't peanuts anyway.
I'll have to ask Joe.
It would be great for your capital, for your capital fund. You wouldn't have to raise the amount of money that you have to raise to buy one out. So we'll lease a model that they have.
This board has not looked at that because the prior experience has been the town has not wanted to be in a lease experience.
Yeah.
As far as the road aid.
Yeah.
But it's a good question for Joe. Article A, that was the selling properties. That's still in effect until we get the last one sold. Article 9 was dealt with. And Article 10, whatever our number is going to be, going to be the layout for the Cash Street paving project. And I contacted Sean Bard, Sugar River, to find out what the current interest rate is for a loan on that. And we'll get that information shortly. So punching in the stuff that we've got so far to the DRA portal. At this point, we've only increased the budget by about $3,000 to $4,000 a month. I expect it to go up a little bit more, but not a whole lot.
Is it considering the increases and everything?
Yep. Now, from Saturday, there's two things.
We need the figures from the trustees on the cemetery maintenance.
There's definitely enough money in the capital reserve fund. Well, I asked the trustee, I don't have the number here, but she says there's enough there to pay the 12.5.
Okay, and then we need the balance for the town vehicles capital reserve as well.
Which one?
The vehicles, the town vehicles.
Right now, $20,141. So we're just trying to get that built back up for purchase in the future.
That's all I had?
That's it, okay. So that brings you up to speed with what we recovered Saturday, getting this put together. And once we get the last few things for the warrant and the breakdown of the cost for paving. Looks like the paving was approximately 400, call it 440,000 to do the whole pad, job on Cash Street at once. And if we do like we did with Lover and Hill, break it down into a loan and spread it out over 10 years, that makes it manageable and keeps the, any tax increase very minimal.
Is that, are they be cleaning it? Are they gonna tear it out?
Have to talk to Joe. There's a, not a large stretch, but it's gonna have to be totally torn out. Once he gets to that one joint.
Yeah, around the bend is not so bad.
Right, that'll probably need some, just a little bit of scarification and then actually putting a new paint on top of it.
And you're just doing the same amount that's paid now?
Yes, starting on where Pine Hill Road connects with Cash going to the end where it stops. Because we did Pine Hill in three different sections last time. That, that was done by a board ahead of me and that just made a mess three times. And it, it has different sections that are different age, so we have to watch it. I did ask Joe regarding if we need to do any spray coating or anything on it to take care of any cracks. And he was gonna look into that for this year because that, that might be a warrant article as well. But it looks like overall, we'll be able to keep our budget pretty much very similar to last year with minimal increase. And we've kept the tax rate the same, $14.22. So now we just have to worry about what the schools are going to do to our pocketbook. So you're gonna continue to work on trying to get info from Doug. If you have problems, give me a holler and I'll, I'll pester him as well.
He seems pretty, pretty good.
Yeah, I know, it's just, it gets to a point where everybody's asking questions at the same time.
Yeah, sure.
This is more, this is just general thing. Do we have anybody involved in the town that has looked at the, at ways to make our town owned buildings more energy efficient? Have looked into, you know, I know, at least residences, you know, the power, the, or the power networks that are up here. You know, they have companies that work with, do energy audits and far reduce costs, whatever the, you know?
At this point, I don't think he's done anything like that. I took measure of changing all the bulbs up here to LEDs. Number one, it was brighter.
Yeah.
And two, it's gonna cost us less money.
Yeah, yeah.
Over Vermont, there's Energy Vermont or Efficiency Vermont, the corporate, the individuals and different organizations in you. I don't know if there's something like that.
Well, there, there has been. And I don't know exactly where this has gone. About six or eight months ago, the PUC decided to discontinue. You know, Efficiency New Hampshire. you know, Efficiency New Hampshire, uh, similar program. And I know that, uh, you know, many of the contractors that were working in the state doing these energy audits that were doing, you know, retrofits or whatever, uh, they were up in arms. They were like, you're gonna put us out of business. So my understanding, you know, from reading articles back a few months ago was that at least some aspects of that program were refunded, you know, the PUC funded it yet. But I don't, I'm not right with the data that's at. And, and how they changed this year, you know, apparently this is broken with gets funded on a yearly basis.
One of the problems, problems that we have is there's no pre-fasing. So if you wanna be solar, you want to sell it back, I suppose, you need three phases.
So I actually talked to, Coop, we're on Coop where we are, and I talked with them about that. And their seller guy told me, no, because we, we have a very good site and feel. And actually, you know, would we consider maybe doing more solar, it could be a municipal, you know, installation. I mean, we would just like to lease our hand for it. And as I said, I talked to Coop because I thought the same thing and this guy said no.
You three phases or the other source talks?
Yeah. So I, I mean, I was surprised because like I said, I thought, just like you did, no, you gotta have three phases.
I think it's the amount of power that matters.
Yeah.
You gotta do a makeup.
Sounds like we need a volunteer to step up and do that. Enough hours.
One more question.
Yes.
Do you or does someone know, what is the threshold now for a town expense at which something does need to be put out to bid?
Uh, I can't hear you well enough. I'm sorry, yours are a little bit plugged.
I'm asking if you or someone knows what the threshold is for a town expense at which an expense would be needed. I'm sorry, can't talk. When does it need to be put out to bid? Like you can spend up to X number of dollars without something being bid, but I don't know what the number is.
As far as I know, our town does not have any policy except for the select board.
I think there's an, I'll say. Alright, I have homework to do because I could be wrong. We'll talk.
So at previous meetings, it was discussed about signage for speeding. Is that from our goal or involved?
Joe has been working with stuff that would be for the school as far as out here having you know, your speed is and stuff. And I was talking to Charlene the other day. She was saying, well, why isn't the school board taking care of it? That's a school issue, not a town issue.
That's why.
So I was thinking the same thing, you know, perhaps, you know, if you're talking about school crossing and stuff, it's not the schools that deal with that. So we may just send it over to them and work on it.
Yeah. I don't know if we're just, those people are quickly doing, they're planning on that in two plus.
Would we be better served if we created last three minutes each time so that people knew what to discuss and so forth?
Yeah.
We've accomplished what we need to get done for this evening. So at this point, I'd entertain a motion for Joe.
So the Coop has won the.
Seven thirty, what?
But, but it's a five year, they have five months to do it and there's only, I think, some people. Coop, so who knows? Well, you're gonna go to the big towns to get them all to the big towns so they're doing their work.
Is there a, is there a, we have programs?
Oh.
I see.
Oh, yeah, I can tell you. I could be a more important.
Like, I spend years on. Have hot soup and food like that.
Soup and cheese.